Starting recording and I will start letting everybody in.
Yes, and this meeting is open.
Hold on, it's gonna take me a while, I gotta get them all in here. Now it's 24. There's 24 now. Let them go.
Just keep getting them all in.
It's an open, it's a public hearing.
Okay. Alright, I'm letting them in.
Let me know when you got them all in.
So everybody knows to go to view so you can see everybody in the right-hand corner of your screen.
Is that the lower right-hand corner?
No, the upper right-hand corner, if you, it's view and a bunch of dots.
Right, if they want to be seen.
Well, if they're, yes, but if you, if you click on that, they'll all come on the screen.
If I click on it?
If you click on it, you'll be able to see everybody that wants to be seen.
Upper right?
Yeah.
Gotcha, done.
Okay, they're all in.
Okay, I'm bringing this meeting to order. This is a public hearing regarding a petition, I'm sorry. First thing on the agenda. Announcements, open session, public comment. Is there any? Okay. Seeing none. This is a public hearing on accessory dwelling units which has been submitted to the selectmen, forwarded to the planning board for a public hearing. It has been advertised two weeks prior to tonight. When we get started, I would ask and hope that one individual to start representing the petitioned article would kind of summate, make a summation of, of their points on the petitioned article. I would ask all of you who have joined this public meeting tonight on Zoom to go easy. Normally, we haven't had to have this many people. I will try and, when you acknowledge yourself, if you want to speak, speak to the article, try not to repeat what's already been said. And we'll see where we go from there. So I will now ask, is, has anyone been designated to speak on behalf of the petitioned article? Yes, Cheryl? You're muted.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm a I'm a person who signed the petition. I feel very strongly about the housing problem here in Wellfleet. I think it's really important that we do something about Wellfleet's year-round housing crisis. The, the need for year-round rentals has become so pressing as more and more homes are rented out through Airbnb and all these short-term rentals. And people who want to live here year-round find it increasingly difficult or absolutely impossible. It's important to me as a, as a year-round person to feel like I live in a community where working people can live, where teachers and policemen and people who, you know, work at the marketplace and the liquor store and the historical society and wherever you happen to work in town, that you can actually afford to live here. Because that's what it takes to have a real year-round community, where people can, you know, relate to each other. Of course, I want my child, my, to be able to afford to live in Wellfleet either as a rental or as a homeowner. The people who work here shouldn't have to commute from, I don't know, Harwich or Eastham or further afield. I want to live in a sustainable community that has diversity that can only, you know, happen if people of different ages and different backgrounds can afford to live here. I know it's hard for schoolteachers to be able to afford a place. And I think it's just incredibly important. And this bylaw would allow the accessory dwelling units which are additional size-restricted dwellings on a single lot with an existing dwelling or structure. I guess you all have this summary, so I don't really need to read it, but I think it's, I think it's of critical importance at this time in terms of our place on the Cape and in Wellfleet in particular, that we really take a stand and really try to do something about this housing crisis.
Okay. Anyone else? Sharon? Sharon Aggar? You're muted, Sharon.
There we go, got it, got it. So this bylaw for some, many of you here know that this bylaw has been a work in progress for some time and that it's the work of the drafting itself was four people from different committees in town and it's based loosely on our Affordable Accessory Dwelling Unit bylaw and also on the Cape Cod Commission Model bylaw and bylaws, ADU bylaws in a number of other Cape towns. Bylaw, this bylaw as it's written would allow one or even more ADUs to be added to a property, whether it's residential or commercial, depending on being able to meet all federal, state, and local laws. So that would include, of course, Title V septic. If a lot, a property is sized for four bedrooms and there are three bedrooms in the principal dwelling, for example, then they should be able to have a, an ADU, provided it's not increasing the septic flow that the system was designed for. This would, these units are intended to be rented year-round and the property owner would have to file an affidavit yearly with an agent designated by the town manager to manage such properties, stating that they are in fact, it is in fact occupied year-round. So some people have asked me, does it have to be rented? Well, so a homeowner could live in an ADU and rent out their primary dwelling. So this would be particular, one of the purposes in, written into the bylaw is first, year-round rental. But another one is to create a diversity of housing forms that are appropriate to people in various stages of life. So they might be a, a young person on the, a young family. They might be an individual with a disability, might be their caregiver. It could be an older person who's downsizing into a more appropriate dwelling for them and renting out their primary dwelling so that they can continue to pay their property taxes and pay for the ADU and continue to live in the town that they may have lived in for 50 years. But now be in a, in a more appropriate dwelling and allow someone, a larger family perhaps, to live in the main house. I'm trying to think of some of the other particular aspects that I may have forgotten. So as I said, all rules and regulations and federal laws would be maintained, would be upheld. And so we're proposing that this bylaw be what they call by right, although it does not say in the bylaw. By right, it says, is allowed in all districts in town except for the National Seashore Park where a special permit would be required. And Elaine, can you think of other things that are particularly germane?
Elaine? Elaine, you're muted.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I do, I do, I do, I'm here on behalf of the Wellfleet Housing Authority and I do want to say that the Wellfleet Housing Authority strongly, after many years of thinking about this, strongly supports the accessory dwelling bylaw. We congratulate the town for a decade ago setting up an affordable accessory dwelling bylaw. The beauty of this ADU bylaw is that we also have a separate special legislation that allows people to rent affordably and still get their tax break under this, this new ADU bylaw, which will ideally take the place of the ADU bylaw. So that's, that's a very important aspect. And we've had experiences where people have been in an AADU. Their, fortunately, their income increased, they were no longer eligible for the AADU. They in fact wanted to buy the AADU, but they couldn't because we don't have laws that allow that. So this, this kind of flexibility would create rental housing that could take person, could really, you know, help a person through different periods of their life. And also, you know, I've been trying to help produce affordable housing for over 15 years. And we have made some strides and we have some good things coming. Our rental assistance, big project at 95 Lawrence Road, if all goes well, it's still, you know, three or four or five years until somebody can move in there. This is a way for our property owners to help contribute to, to our, the diversity of our housing, as Cheryl talked about. Right now, we're hearing about a bunch of people in one of the most valuable industries in our town, the shell fishing industry, who are losing rentals because people are deciding not to rent anymore. They probably make a little too much to afford affordable housing, they don't quite make enough to buy a home. An ADU could really suit their purposes and especially if it was people that were willing to give them a space to, to have their equipment. We, I think we must have a grandfathered apartment on our road and somebody stores all their equipment there. And I love walking by and seeing that because I know that that's providing a living for somebody. So I feel that this is a really it's, it's happening all over the country. We have had a bylaw like this which has served us well. I know many people who have accepted rental through this program and so and we know some of the issues that were a little bit difficult with that. So I feel that looking at this anew with everything we've learned and how we're losing ground right now to take care of our working families, our seniors, I think this is an important tool for Wellfleet.
Okay.
Thank you. And, and I, thank you.
No, were you finished? I didn't want to cut you off. Okay. Anyone else initially? Yes, state your name. Your name? Susan?
I just want you to ask whoever is 490443 that he should move himself because I can't hear you. That's making so much noise.
That's me.
Well.
You're getting a, I don't know if you're talking in the background or not, David.
It's making me crazy. Thank you.
Okay.
That's it.
Any, anyone else initially want to speak to the petition article before I open up to the planning board? No, okay. Planning board members, anybody want to jump in?
David Mead Fox? First, I want to say I agree with the urgency of the need and all the things that have been stated. It makes complete sense. I think the, the trick is how to really make it happen and trying to find the best way to do this. And I don't have necessarily huge quarrels with what's been written, but there are, I have some questions. I'd be interested in other people's opinion on it. One is, I'm not quite clear on how this would discourage Airbnbs and other short-term rentals if somebody could earn more money doing those things.
Can I answer that one, Jerry?
Yeah, David, sure.
Yeah, there's nothing to stop you from doing that. With this written bylaw, you can do what you want. Despite what is written in there, it is unenforceable. It's a good attempt, but currently that aspect, I believe, can be enforceable.
The thing that I think about is usually what happens at the end of the day, either because of financial need or just human nature, is that if somebody can get more money for something, selling their car, whatever it is, all things considered, most people go with getting more money. And so that's just a concern that I have.
Okay, so Dave, David, go to 6.2.3.2. That's in the petitioned article, right? Do you find that section?
Yeah.
It says procedure. 6.21.3.2. You see that section?
Yeah.
Okay. "Once an accessory dwelling unit has received a certificate of occupancy, it shall not be occupied or used until registered with the agent designated by the town administrator." Back up the bus on that. Once you have a CO, there's nothing preventing you from doing it with what you want. You don't have to go to the town. It says you do. But once Paul or any building official gives you a CO for that structure, it is now yours to use how you see fit. You cannot be compelled at any point to register with the town. You built the building. You can't be required to rent it or do anything. So that unto itself opens up Pandora's box as to what you can do with it. That's right in their drafted petition article. That's a flaw and that's something we should look at. But I believe that's a significant flaw. Because once I put my John Hancock or Paul or whoever is, that's it. He signed the billing over. You are legally entitled to occupy it. I don't think Wellfleet zoning bylaws can override state building code.
And the thing, the thing that I think we don't want, because we all care about long-term rental housing, this isn't about affordable so much, by the way. This clearly is focusing on market rate rental housing. But since we all agree on that, what we don't want, partly to David's point in mind, is a situation where we have a sort of an explosion of new units that are short-term rentals that don't meet our purpose of providing long-term rental and, by the way, do tremendous, put tremendous pressure on our really very fragile water and septic systems that are already, I mean, if we don't handle the water and septic right, we all know this. Whether it's affordable or not, or there's rental housing or not, will become entirely irrelevant because no one will be able to live here. So that's kind of a separate issue, but I believe it's important somehow in this, whatever we end up with, figure out a way to be sure that the septic systems are really brought up to code. And if the ones that are now grandfathered in and somebody wants to do an ADU, well, what if they don't have the money to upgrade the septic system? Okay, we ought to have a grants program or a low-interest loan program to help handle that. But, but to just increase rental housing, period. When we don't have town water, we don't have a sewage treatment plant, I don't think it's sufficient by itself. We could end up really regretting it. Plus, again, maybe it'll end up being all short-term anyway. I don't know.
Well, David, to give you a little background. Additional accessory dwelling units were allowed by right in the town of Wellfleet up until the mid-'80s. At which point we as a planning board went through all of the uses in the use table and analyzed water and surge situation. And it, even back in the mid-'80s, we were concerned with the consumption of water, the availability of water, the problems on Indian Neck, Lieutenant's Island, Old Wharf, where that lens gets so shallow before it goes to saltwater. So we took a tremendous amount of uses out of the Central District and other uses throughout the town, including that additional dwelling, accessory dwelling unit. But back in the '80s, we went right to that point. And even then, you saw, you could see that we still had to go to town water in the Central District. Back to David. I'm not sure. There is a caveat in there in a statement in the petitioned article that says, yes, the building inspector will issue a certificate of occupancy. But it also states that it's got to be registered with the individual appointed to oversee this with a letter stating that there is a year-round tenant.
I don't think you can link the two, Jerry.
I'm sorry?
I don't, I don't think you can link the two because now you're dabbling in building code. You can't amend building code with your own rules. That would be akin to amending building code. You cannot do that. It's wishful thinking. It's a wet dream, okay? You can't do that. Building code is standalone, state code. You don't get to add on to it at the local level.
There is, and I agree, David, there is, there is a separation between building code and zoning code.
Correct.
However, let's just, let's make an assumption here, just, just for planning board discussion. Let's, let's say that for practical purposes at this moment, there is a way that the letter needs to be addressed to the appropriate agent overseeing this in the town of Wellfleet. Now, back to David Fox.
Okay.
Just to assume it for a minute. Just now back to David Mead Fox's situation. Let's say, for example, the individual doesn't do it. Now, to David Rau's point, that certificate of occupancy is still valid. There may be a question, you know, I'm certainly, and I tell everyone upfront, I'm not an attorney. But there is a question there that, okay. The certificate of occupancy has been issued on the property. Since we got that particular property to that point where the building inspector has monitored the construction, septic has been approved, all things are done and that property is not being used as a year-round rental. The building inspector's position upon a complaint or duty would go to the owner and say, okay, you must take out the stove of that property.
Well, or Jerry, the other alternative is that you revoke the certificate of occupancy because at that point, it's a zoning violation and it's within his scope to revoke the CO until the terms of the special, of, of the permit are fulfilled. But that's, that's the mechanics of it. But that's a rather elaborate process for Paul or anybody in that position to be chasing down these units. That's a constant enforcement issue.
Well, okay, David, but I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get beyond that. And I'm not sure that he has to even do that. And the reason why I don't think he has to do that and can't do it is that in order for it to be a dwelling unit, it had to have a kitchen. If he pulls the kitchen out, and this now goes directly to your question, David, I believe, Fox. If he pulls the kitchen stove out, that is no longer according to building code of a dwelling unit. However, because it met Title V, there is now an appropriate upgraded, hopefully, septic system. The stove has been taken out. That does not stop that individual owner to turn around and rent it as they see fit in the condition it is without the stove.
So because it's occupiable and not habitable. That's the second definition.
It's habitable because it's legal.
No, 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 that becomes occupiable.
Oh, yeah.
Habitable kicks it to the stove. When you take the stove out, it merely becomes occupiable.
Exactly. So now it's occupiable. So now what happens, David, is as we see happening more and more in town of Wellfleet is, okay, it can become bed and breakfast because they don't cook. It can become a Airbnb because they don't cook. It can become a cottage rental because they don't normally cook in a stove. There's a grill outside on the deck. Nothing has changed. So indirectly there becomes a problem.
Like, Jerry, if I could, it's almost like there would need to be, enforcement's always a problem and for sure, but it's almost like there'd need to be some kind of incentive. I don't know how you do this in the bylaw so that people are gonna use the property for long-term rental, not something else. Like affordability aside, forget affordability for the moment, like a property tax exemption just because it's long-term rental. I don't know if that can be done. Or some other benefit to the homeowner so that it's, that's a kind of a carrot approach. So we don't only go with a stick approach.
It probably could be done, David, and sorry, David Rau, I didn't want to cut you off, but it probably could be done because we see as year-round residents, the town of Wellfleet has granted our year-round residents a percentage off the tax clear across the board. So that probably could be done. However, one second, David. However, and back to your point again, because I'm trying to get your questions.
Yes.
You said, okay, if they had to upgrade the septic, septic system and they couldn't afford it. Hopefully, we, we could provide some kind of financial aid on that. Well, and I don't mean to be argumentative here, but. The where, what we are going through at the present time. Currently, a thousand square foot unit, year round. Built to code. The minimum. Absolute minimum, and you can probably turn corners even cheaper, but the minimum one would have to figure. Is probably somewhere around three hundred to three hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars a square foot. So that thousand square foot unit is gonna cost that individual on the low side, three hundred thousand dollars. If they can do it themselves, it might cost two fifty. But it's gonna cost around three hundred thousand plus. The cost of upgrading that septic system isn't gonna make or break the deal. Because the cost of the construction is so expensive today.
Unless they already have a unit that they're gonna use and they just have the problem with the septic and no money.
That's correct. But now they've got to, it's a freestanding unit. It's, it's a change of use from a garage to a dwelling unit. So, yes, it costs them less, but we haven't seen a lot of those happen. So now I, that's enough from me, but David Rowl has got a question here.
Yeah, I, we're kind of digressing a little bit because I love David's points. And those are all the points that as a board, we came up with and ran into obstacles. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we sort of I P'd it or withdrew it, so this article could be presented. Now, none of those concerns that David had brought forward are even remotely addressed. In this petitioned article, and that in itself is cause for concern. So I think we have to, should limit the discussion to the merits of the article presented. And not to hypothesize on what could be.
Well, I think that's, 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 that's true, David, but it's also what could be, what can happen, what, what may happen, what.
We can't change this article right now.
No, we cannot, as a petitioned article. We cannot change an I, a T, or a comma. It goes to town meeting and then it, it falls on. And I see his name right in front of me. It falls on the moderator to, to make a determination on whether it's in the scope. Of the article to make the change on town meeting floor. So, and if, if the moderator would love to jump, jump in at any time that I misunderstand or misspoke, certainly do so, Mr. Moderator. So, yes, that's absolutely correct. Let's see, I think we've touched a couple of those. Other members, Bonnie.
Yes, um, okay, I, I'm trying to unraise my hand. Anyway.
You wanna unraise your hand? I can do that.
Oh, good.
Okay. Anyone, any other planning board member?
No, 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 that's not. I was looking at my hand on the screen. So this kind of is relevant to David's point, but I just wanna make. Sure that I understand the legal implications of this article, which. So. The definition of an accessory dwelling is that it's year round, right? So does this mean that? If once this is passed, no one can. Build a new accessory dwelling unit unless it's year round.
Can I answer that one, Jerry?
Go ahead, David.
It's very difficult and challenging because both in building code and what we have adopted. To build any structure that is not compliant with the energy codes. So by definition, it needs all the parameters to be habitable. That means heat. Possibly cooling or what they call conditioned space. It needs to have all the amenities to make it habitable and be a kitchen. You can't build a seasonal cottage anymore unless it's specified like a cottage colony where there's limitations. Where you can exclusively build for seasonality. Does that answer your question?
Well, I mean, I understand that, that this, that whatever is built has to. Follow all the other, other building code regulations. But I just wanna understand the implications, in other words. But it still means, it does mean, you know, assuming that all these other codes are met. It means that no one can build. A new accessory dwelling unit without it being year round, which by the way, I would support. I think that's a great, I think it would be a good rule.
But, but how can we know that it stays year round? That's the.
You can't know that.
But there is, there is in here, there is in here a procedure. Whereby there is a yearly, you know, inspection, regulation. And monitoring to make sure that it stays year round. So I don't understand. So I mean, I think all we can do is put the right legal language in place.
Well, and I, but I still go back to follow the money on this because there's no. Somebody would pop procedure aside, and I think the procedure is a, as, as well intention and a step in the right direction, but. If somebody realizes they can make more money in a short term rental situation, more often than not, that's what they're gonna do. And nobody can stop them, I don't think.
Let's see if I can get to you, Bonnie. I think what would happen, and again, I'm not an attorney. If you didn't rent it on a year round basis. And the building inspector told you to take out the stove. It may now fall under our definition of a simple accessory use.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so now it doesn't, it doesn't get ripped down. It may fall under the accessory use, a use customary, customarily incidental. And subordinate to the principal use of buildings and located on the same lot with such principal use of buildings. In buildings restricted to residential use, the office of a professional man, customary home occupations. Traditions in well, uh, in the town, workshops conducted for compensation shall be deemed accessory uses. They don't limit all, they don't spell all of them, but indirectly. A B and B is an accepted use in the town of Wealthley, and so is a bed and breakfast up until. Three bedrooms, anything over three bedrooms, anything over three or more or over three. You must need a permit for a special permit for a bed and breakfast. So the building doesn't get turned down, the use changes.
Jerry, on a historical note, we do have that. We had fifteen. And those weren't able to be monitored at all in the twenty years that we had this bylaw. There are four thousand residential structures in Wealthley. There's no possible way to pump, to monitor all this for compliance. There's just no way. Staff is just, you never, you, you couldn't have the staff to do that. We didn't, we had the staff and we couldn't monitor fifteen properly for twenty years. Now we're proposing an unlimited addition to this. So there again, I see problems with the ability, not the conceptual idea, but the practical ability to enforce this.
Okay. I don't want, Beth, good, thank you.
So I think, I think there are multiple issues here. One is existing properties. Never mind building a new one. We have many in place. That could be year round, but they're not. They're not necessarily habitable. I know of two that don't have. A full kitchen and they rent year round. And I know of several where they are habitable. And the owners move in and then they rent their big house by the week in season. Which is the typical thing existing properties do. And they deny they have a rental property. I know this from doing the census. You can see it's a rental property and the owner will deny that anyone is ever in there. It's, it's uninhabitable, they'll tell you. So there's the existing properties that don't have to go through this process. And then there's new construction, and I think it's different. I don't think we can monitor either one well, but you have an initial opportunity with new development. That you don't have with existing properties. But I, I, I have to agree with David that it is not. It is not enforceable. Because, because there are so many ways around it. And who knows who's living where. And I really like David's idea about incentives because as long as it's more profitable. To rent for ten weeks, either your big house or your little house, than it is to rent year round. That's what people are going to do. So somehow the incentives have to balance the greed. Of our society.
And so I realize that we can't change this and all of that, it's, it's gonna go as written before town meeting. That's. Very clear, but it doesn't mean we can't have a discussion which we're doing about, is there some way? An additional article, an additional action by somebody, by the select board, by next town. By you, the next town meetings, some mechanism to say, let's. Put some carrots out there to encourage people to do year round rentals. That's.
Okay, David, to, but to.
I second that, David. Okay, write that down.
However.
I know that's not why we're here.
Thank you very much. However, this is a public hearing on specifically. A petitioned article. That. Has really no, that's the planning board's future to consider one way or the other, especially what happens on town meeting floor. But it's really not as pertinent as other issues within direct context. To this particular bylaw. I got a number of questions, but I don't, I, I don't wanna monopolize the planning board. Is there somebody else on the planning board that wants to speak or ask a question?
Jerry, can I address the use regulations?
Yes.
This is directly to the article, directly to the petitioned article.
Yes.
So, as they should, and as they attempted to do. You will have to modify the use regulations in the zoning bylaw in order for this to work. They have made some adjustments to that. However, the ones that are already in place. Are in direct con, uh, contradiction to what they have proposed. So what that creates in my mind, if this gets adopted tomorrow as it's written. It would only be applicable to lots bigger than thirty eight thousand square feet.
Thirty thousand.
No, thirty eight. And this is what, this is why, okay? Go to the use regulations. They've modified five point six, blah, 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 blah. Go to our zoning book, page twenty four. Top of the page. Intensity of use application to multiple family dwellings. The first unit of a multiple family dwelling, which this is, by definition, under our own bylaws, it's two family. Or an apartment building shall meet, meet, shall require a minimum land area equal to that of the lot requirements. That would be thirty thousand square feet. Each additional unit will require eight thousand square feet of land. Now, this is written in four thirty eighty five, and it's still in effect. So that's why I say that would be in direct contradiction to what they have proposed. Meaning there'd mean a minimum of thirty thousand and that additional unit would require another eight thousand. So you'd need at least a thirty eight thousand square foot lot to do anything.
Unless that was changed.
Unless what? I'm sorry?
Unless the.
Yes, correct. Unless that was modified, but it hasn't been, and that's why I'm pointing this out. There are lots of things to clarify. It's not in this article.
That would be hard to call, that would be hard to change on top meeting floor.
Right.
David, can I build on?
But that comes with implic- implications.
I know. Can I build on that question for a minute? David? Rowl.
What?
To specifically that question. Where you were going. In the. Accessory dwelling unit petitioned article. Article five point four point seven.
Yeah.
I need some help. No dwelling unit should be converted into two or more units unless each resulting unit consists of a minimum of six hundred square feet. Of livable floor area. The external appearance of the structure is not changed. The front side, the, um, the front. Side and rear yard requirements of the district in which those, which is. Missing, but in which located are met. And the lot area is not less per dwelling than the lot requirement of the district in which it was located.
There, there again says it's thirty thousand square feet. That's what that says, because our minimum lot size is thirty thousand square feet. It negates anything below that.
And that's kind of what I was reading, David. So now with you, with your input, with, with my question. I need to ask, I would like to ask, I'm sorry. I would like to ask somebody that petitioned the article or their representative. To clarify for the planning board what they were trying to do or what five, or what they think five point four seven. Means. Because I read it, the way David reads it, is that it's saying that you've gotta abide by your front side and rear yard requirements. And the amount of area in the district that that unit is located.
That's very clear. It's spelled out.
Be, before you go to that.
Yeah.
David, David, I think you might wanna look to see what the central district requirements are.
Oh, is it smaller than, am I a bad boy and made a blank state?
No, that's just, that's just, no, that's just. And Alfred, you're absolutely right.
So right, twenty thousand square feet.
In the central district, it's fifteen thousand square feet, and then you add your.
Twenty.
Twenty, you add your eight. However, for the maj, for the majority in the central district. There is going to be a serious problem with lot size. Because most of those lots are in fact already. Close to lot coverage already. So when you get.
Or, 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 or they don't meet the setbacks, so this doesn't apply to preexisting nonconforming structures.
Right.
Because that precludes nonconforming structures. It has to be a compliant. Structure on that lot, which are very few, if any.
And, but the majority, and, and David Rowl, you and I talked. At one point, we were kicking things around, but the majority, it seems. Of lots that could accommodate something of this nature is outside. Of the central district. In the R one district, which again triggers the thirty thousand square feet. National sea shore triggers three acres, uh, commercial triggers one acre. Uh, C two, same thing.
Thirty thousand, yeah.
Thousand, so I, I, I guess what I'm, I'm asking. The individuals that petitioned the article, or again, through anybody there. Where this question obviously would come up on town meeting floor. And it's come up with the planning board members. What do you think you were trying to say in that? And what, what are we missing? Anybody gonna weigh in on that? Sharon?
I, I believe that Helen drafted this section and she, she felt that except in the case of an accessory dwelling unit. I believe that Helen drafted this section and she, she felt that except in the case of an accessory dwelling unit. As provided in section 6.21 of these zoning bylaws made that possible.
No.
Maybe that's a question we're not equipped to answer.
I will certainly admit to that if that's. As a possibility, Beth, in one minute.
It's a disclaimer. It's vague. It's not clear. It's possible. But it's certainly not definitive.
I think Bruce has his hand up. He might be able to shed more light on this.
One second, Bruce. Please. Go ahead, Bruce. Bruce?
You're muted. You're muted. You need to unmute.
I can't hear you.
All right. First, let me make one general comment. I don't think anybody that's on this call disputes the fact that we have a serious, if not an urgent need in the community. I spent six years in a senate drafting hundreds of pieces of legislation. And sometimes if you're lucky, you get it right the first time. Then you address a need and sometimes you have to have some experience with the legislation and sometimes you have to fix it. I commend the people, Elaine and Sharon and Olga and Helen who drafted this initially and asked me to weigh in. And I consulted, in fact, a lawyer in my office is the chairman of the zoning board in Falmouth. And we compared what we were drafting with what they were doing in Falmouth. In fact, as we all know, seven or eight communities in the Cape now have ADU provisions. And what we did was we included, for example, in our draft of the bylaw here. The monitoring section, which is 6.21.4 and the enforcement provision, which is 6.21.6. Our intent is not to change the zoning bylaws, except as noted in the draft itself. We are not amending any other statute or provision that is not. The draft itself. Is it perfect and can we address every hypothetical situation that may or may not come up? Probably not. But not to address the need and see how the zoning bylaw works isn't excusable. Because what we're trying to do is we're trying to create some diversity and housing opportunity in our community so that we continue to be a sustainable community. So, so will issues come up regarding enforcement? Or whether or not someone require a special permit depending upon the dimensions of their lot? We don't know that at this particular point. But after a year, we may find out that we may have had no ADUs. Or we may have had five, or we may have had 10, which means that five or 10 families had a place to live. They didn't have a place to do otherwise. But not to do anything is not an answer. So I would say to all of those people that are raising questions. Your questions may be legitimate. They may not be legitimate. They may come up as problems. They may not come up as problems. But what we have presented to the planning board and what we have tried to draft is the best that we can come up with at this time. And we'll see how it works. It may work well, it may not. But not to address it, not to make an attempt to correct the problem is not an answer.
I think that what I have to quarrel with that a bit, the planning board does not want to do nothing. None of us individually or collectively wants to do nothing. We agree completely with the same urgency of affordable for rental housing as everybody on this meeting. That's one of the things we all share in this town completely. And I think it's important to understand that we all have that same base of belief and how important this is. Nobody wants to do nothing. What we're trying to do because we care about this is raise issues so that it's more likely to succeed. That's what we all want.
Here, here.
Thank you, David.
It's, it's. Bruce, I understand what you're saying. But. And I understand there was probably, no decision has been made by the planning board yet, but. And I understand that there was probably good input. I'm not questioning and I don't, hopefully I'm not presenting that I'm questioning. The input that was given by those credible individuals that helped with this bylaw. But I also know after 27 years on the planning board. That when the planning board sends an article to town meeting floor. We beat the hell out of it. And we try and anticipate. All of the questions that we possibly can. So that when we get on town meeting floor. We can answer those questions correctly. And not just say, let's throw it out there, see if it works and see what problems we have. Address the problems before we get there. Yes, we don't write perfect articles. But we try and do the best we can. And most. Petitioned articles. Have problems that arise in the future because they're not vented as well or as. As openly and as long as the planning board would beat them up. So I have to agree with David Mead. There is nobody on the planning board, not a single member of this planning board. Denies that we have a problem like all of Cape Cod with affordable rental units. But all of our towns are different. And all of our towns have water situations that are different. Some have town water, some have town sewage, where these kind of bylaws make so much more sense than in a fragile area like Wellfleet. And small lots, majority of small lots, that we have to really analyze. One of those things I have to analyze closely is by right. You create a neighborhood after 18, 1985 where single family dwelling was the only thing allowed. Anything else was by special permit on the accessory, affordable accessory dwellings. And now by right, you can build as many units as you please on a piece of property that you can fit. There is no number here like the AADU. That has three. There's no number. That bothers me. What bothers me is by right. An owner comes in, they're not spending 200,000 on housing anymore. They're spending three quarters of a million dollars to five million dollars in the town of Wellfleet. They want to know what's going on in their backyard and have some notice. So we're all in this together. We all recognize the need. But as a planning board, we also have to look at the entire town of Wellfleet and its ambiance and where it is. And what we feel is, makes good sense for the town. And I think that's what we're kicking around right now. Yes, Bruce?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, and I certainly don't mean to be argumentative, but. I understand the concern that is raised by you and Mr. Mead Fox. Did the planning board have an opportunity to address this bylaw at some point? And either didn't do it or chose not to do it. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is. One of the reasons that this group came together is that the planning board did have an opportunity to address this need. And for one reason or another, didn't do it.
Well, I'll see if I can give you a little. And I think it's probably. Relevant. The. Cape Cod Commission. I believe went to the housing authority. With their idea of ADU throughout Cape Cod. They didn't look at each town as an individual town and what problems they might have. They looked at the fact that Cape Cod needed. More rental units. When it first came to the planning board for discussion from the affordable housing group. The first thing out of our mouths from the planning board, from a number of the, of the members was, all right, it's going to be affordable. And a line was drawn right off the bat that no, this is not affordable. This is open market value units. So the planning board continued that discussion. With. With the group, which was made up of. Individuals on the housing authority and private individuals. And we did some research. And one of the major problems we came up with the research was. That. In the definition of Title V, new construction was any, anything that required a certificate of occupancy. And that that property then must, it loses its protection. Under the grandfathering of 1995 and now must come up to code on that septic system with no variances. And all of a sudden in Wellfleet, that changed the ability on a lot of properties. And we looked at costs, we looked at a number of other things. And. Again, the venting process, we were getting closer and closer to time of the essence. With town meeting, advertising, public hearings and so on. And I believe. No, I'm sorry. I'll take the word believe out of there. I advocated. To this group. That listen, if we can't move fast enough for you. There is a way that you can get an article on town meeting floor by petition. It only requires 10 signatures. It only has to be submitted to the town clerk, told them how to do it. Gave them that alternative through the entire discussion. And when we hit that roadblock, where all of a sudden the members of the planning board said, wait a minute, we need to slow down. We have a problem with enforcement. We have a problem with water. We have a problem with septic. There's a number of problems we want to look at. I again said to the committee, listen, if you feel that you can put something together, please do so. Go right ahead. It will come back to the planning board and it will be. A recommendation, no recommendation or not to recommend from the planning board. On town meeting floor, and that's all we can do. And they chose to do that. And there is absolutely. And I'll speak for the planning board and any member can certainly speak up. We had no hard feelings about it. We encouraged to do so. We didn't know where they were going to go. And they chose to do so and submitted the article which we have before us.
Jerry, the other thing that I just, if I could just throw in for a minute is that.
Dave, certainly, David.
Precisely because we care about this issue so much, it's why we discussed it at such great length. We discussed it at, I don't remember for sure, two or three meetings. Great length, hours and hours and hours because we think it's an important problem facing the town. Just to be clear.
So that, that Bruce, to answer your question is, is how it got there. There are still questions in my mind. There's still questions to some other, others' individuals as well, as much as they want the bylaw. As far as. Septic situations, as far as. By right, as far as no numbers on the thing. There are some problems and, and just to. So that's what we're discussing and trying to get through right now. Where, where is our recommendation going to go?
Jerry, can I give Bruce an example of one of the problems we came up with that's still not resolvable, but this is in respect to Title V. It's unresolved.
Yes.
So there are many properties in Wellfleet. That are 30,000 square feet. Many of those properties have a four bedroom system on them. Okay, that seems reasonable. They're protected from 99. So let's say they implement this bylaw. Okay, what they would wind up with is they would have to be now compliant. And what that would mean is they would be only allowed three bedrooms on that property. They would lose a bedroom. They would give one of those bedrooms for accessory dwelling in order to get two residences on there. So they would wind up with a two bedroom house and a one bedroom structure. Which is what it says, and they would have completely lost another bedroom. Not many people are going to do that route. So that was one of the little obstacles that we had to, we were deliberating on and we really haven't come to an answer or conclusion about it. But it was certainly a big hurdle to cross.
Enforcement, I see the hand, Bruce. Enforcement is also a major key. We have probably, we've estimated. Over 50 units in the town of Wellfleet that are totally illegal. No permits, no inspections. As Beth has said, oh, they don't exist. That nobody within town hall, no building inspector, no one has the power, wants to put somebody, once they're into a particular piece of property. On the street. The only one can get away with it. But the town of Wellfleet doesn't want to get away with it. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm missing somebody. Alfred?
Jerry, when Bruce gets done, I'd like to ask a question through you to him, but I'd like him to go first because he had the floor.
Okay, Bruce?
So here's the thing. And I know that Stephanie Cox and Alisa McNada, both of whom I know very well. That have dealt with this situation both on a Capewide basis and on a statewide basis. So far, to my knowledge, with the seven or eight communities that have passed bylaws. No one has had a problem yet with enforcement or monitoring. Doesn't mean it might not happen, but so far. The ADUs that have been passed in these towns have been successful with no problems. We should take the opportunity to pass the bylaw and see how it works. And if we have to fix it, we'll fix it. Anybody that's on this call can come up with a million hypotheticals about things that may or may not happen. And when we have to deal with those, we'll deal with it. But my response again is it is not, it is inexcusable not to do anything. Or not to attempt to address the problem. And if we have issues that come up. We're a very competent community. We have competent boards that serve the town. We have a lot of competent public servants. And we'll deal with those issues. But I think it is our responsibility as a community to address the problem and do the best we can to address it.
Bruce, we don't need to hear that again. We all agree with that.
Well, fine. Then I apologize for making the statement again.
That's all right. Alfred?
And Bruce, if you don't want to answer this, that's okay. I've read the bylaw that's presented. And if I read this correctly, and this is why I'm looking for verification, because I think you've read it. If you have a three quarter acre lot that's vacant. And you put an alternative septic system in, you can get four bedrooms out of it. And at that point, you could build four units, one bedroom units. With 11. 1100 square foot base on it. Is that not correct? Would you like me to tell you how I got to that figure?
Sure, fine. Go ahead.
Basically, I took the, the 30,000 square feet, you're allowed 15%, so that gives you 4,500. So if you cut that down to 11 to stay under the 12 for each unit. And, and the 30,000 gives you three bedrooms and the alternative septic system bumps it by one. So now you get four legal rental units, if I understand that correctly.
Well, Alfred, I'm going to give you the lawyerly answer and say that. I really would have to look at what it is you're proposing and digest it before I would give you an answer. As, as you know, it's not responsible for a lawyer to give someone an opinion without having the opportunity to, to think about and address the issue. So-
Well, I'll make, I'll make it as a statement then, by me reading this. Um, it says under definition-
I believe you're right, Alfred.
And I want to be very clear, Bruce. You know, I've built an affordable accessory. I'm not opposed to this. I also sent a piece of equipment to dig test holes on lots the town was gonna use for affordable units. The town hasn't done anything with them yet. Um, you know, there's two of them on Taylor Hill, that I dug test things that we spent engineering money for. And for some reason, we haven't worked at putting houses on those yet either. Um, and we started on those years ago. So I, I mean, I'm a little, I guess, concerned that this bylaw may work, but we need to put all the tools in the, in the, in the thing. And we've got tools that we're not even using, that we've gone through already to make sure we had units for people. I, and I didn't mean to put, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but the fact that you've read this, I think that it's very clear in here that we get to that. So I could, I could sense that if you have a three-quarter acre lot and it's vacant, and you want to spend the money to put some units on it, you have that luxury without being called a cottage colony.
Which would be, need at least an acre. Cottage colony would need at least an acre.
Alfred, I understand Bruce's point as an attorney, but I can only do-
No, I know. And I, and I apologize for pinning him down.
I can reiterate at this point, you are absolutely correct.
But I want to be very clear. I didn't mean to pin Bruce down that way.
That's okay. He's, he-
Jerry?
Yeah. And I don't mean to pick on you, Bruce, but to answer your question, three years ago, we had 15 to 17 ADU, AADUs. We now have approximately 10. There's five in the missing. So we are not, in fact, on top of policing what we have. Because we can't even find out what the heck the five, the other five are doing, how they're renting or anything else. And it just goes to show how easily-
They moved to Crowell.
Yeah, they moved to Crowell, yeah, David. How easily this stuff falls through the cracks and-
Jerry?
Is not taken care of. I'm sorry, I missed who just said something. It could be Fox. Yep?
Uh, it's a procedure question or process. I understand what our responsibility is to vote yes, no, or no vote, right?
No, I, well, I'll put it the same, same way you did. Our, our responsibility is to either recommend-
Right.
Not recommend, or no recommendation.
Okay.
Those are our three alternatives.
Right. Here's my question. Can we, for example, make a recommendation, or any of those three actually, but as part of our nation about it, note the need for some specific improvements to help this work better. Long-term rentals, you know, et cetera. We could, I wrote down four things that we could say. We could end up saying, we recommend this, but here are four things that we believe will improve it and, and prevent the possibility of a ton of short-term rentals, et cetera. Or we don't recommend it because there are these four things. Can we add sort of issues?
So can we amend it? Is what you're asking. Like, David, can, can the petition be amended?
Petition, that's the, that's the great thing about something that comes from a zoning bylaw from the planning board. We can have a hearing, an advertised public hearing, just like this. Public hearing. Get the feedback from the individuals, from the public, after they've been to our meetings, um, over and over again. And we can make changes after that meeting. We can make changes. It is not our job to-
No, I, I don't make changes to the article. I mean, a statement about-
Well, the statement, okay, the statement would be basically, and it can be, usually, this is the, I forget what the moderator calls it, but it's usually the dance, or a better term, that the moderator, town moderator, and Bruce is there and Dan is here, and the chair do on town meeting floor as to state when it was at, when the article was advertised, the public hearing was held, what the vote of the planning board was, and then a report after it's, it's moved and seconded. That report could be, for example, the vote would be recommend or not recommend, or in depth, or no recommendation. If it's seconded and opened to the, opened up, in this case, normally what would happen is the moderator, I believe, would come back to the chair or the individual representing the planning board and, and ask, okay, is there a report?
Okay.
That report would say, okay, and I'm not making a presumption here in any case.
Yeah.
But if the, if the report was no recommendation, we would substantiate the no recommendation by saying, listen, we believe that multiple, that additional rental units are, are needed in the town of Wellfleet. However, there was no number. There was, um, there was no special permit. There was X, Y, and Z that we felt could have been put into the article that wasn't to reinforce and, and protect neighborhoods and abutters and things of that nature. And then it just gets open to the petitioner to make their presentation on town meeting floor and opened up the questions. So yeah, that would be, that would be the process.
If we did approve, if we did recommend, could we also give a report?
Uh, we give a report no matter whether we recommend, don't recommend, or no recommendation.
The report is where we can say whatever we might decide to say as a group about recommendation. Okay.
Yes.
To me, to me, just to be clear, it makes it easier for me to think about, and I don't know what I'm gonna do on this myself, going with recommend, actually. If I imagine a report that says, we recommend, but here are some things that we think are issues that are important and need to be followed up on, blah, 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 then to just say recommend, which implies we're all in. So-
Well, that would be a discussion that we would have, yes.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I have, I have a question.
Yes.
So it was said that seven towns have adopted this, and there have been no issues with, um, monitoring it. Can I have some more information about that in those seven towns? How many units have been created? And something about that, so that there is a context to it?
Mr. Chairman, Stephanie Cox has her hand up, and she can address that question. Jerry, did you hear me?
Jerry, call on Stephanie.
I'm sorry, Stephanie.
Hi there, folks. Stephanie Cox from Smarter Cape Partnership. Thank you so much for having this hearing and, and for recognizing me. So, ma'am, in, in answer to your question, yeah, so seven towns, and then on Monday, it became eight towns with the town of Sandwich passing it at their town meeting. And, uh, you know, I'd have to look up the details for each town. But basically, the first towns that did it were a little bit more conservative in their approach. So the number of units created per year is smaller. And then as each year kind of went on and more towns got comfortable doing it, became closer to the model bylaw, then the more number of units ended up getting created. But there is not one town, you know, that has passed, that has passed anything, you know, close to the model bylaw, that has had, seen anything close to even 10 units a year being created. Because building an ADU is in an, is it, is it, excuse me, it is an investment. It is something that, you know, you have to have a certain motivation in terms of you've got family, that you want to be able to stay there. You're looking to be able to age in place. So it's not something that a ton of people want to do anyways. And as has been pointed out, that not everyone is going to be able to, right? So the crux of this bylaw is that it, it fits within your existing zoning. So you can't build anything more in terms of an addition or freestanding unit or extra bedroom than you're already allowed to build right now. And so, yeah, that, that means some people can't do it. And that's just the way it is. But it, you know, so given that there's a limited pool of people who can build, who want to build, who have the money to build, we don't want to make it any more restrictive. The more restrictive that we make it, then the, the net number of units that gets created comes down to zero, which is what we have right now. Did I answer your question?
Well, what I'm getting at is, towns that have had this experience, are there new accessible dwelling units that are compliant? And how does that number compare to new rental units that are not year-round?
That are accessory?
That are not year-round. That are rental units on your property, but are not year-round. Do we have information about that?
I, I'm trying to understand the question. I want to be able to answer it.
Accessible dwelling units are year-round rentals?
Yes, in, well, in most towns, they, they are required to be year-round, yes.
So what I'm asking is, in the towns that this bylaw exists currently, have they seen an increase in accessible dwelling units that are compliant with their law?
They have.
And have they seen an increase in seasonal rental units?
They haven't seen-
And those to compare?
They haven't seen an increase in accessory dwelling units that are seasonal. If I'm, if I'm answering your question correctly, I think the question of whether or not there are-
What I'm getting at, if I own a home and I'm gonna put in a unit, and I'm gonna decide whether it's gonna be year-round or seasonal. And we're making the assumption that the average Joe is gonna go seasonally because it's better profit. Not because it's the right thing to do, but because it's better profit. I want to know, in the towns where this exists, has the law impacted the community in terms of creating accessible dwelling units as opposed to seasonal rentals? Have we seen a change in that demographic decision?
I think that the two, there's two different, I'm gonna try to answer your question. First and foremost, the towns that have passed the model bylaw have, I think people, when they're making the choice in terms of, you know, whether or not to rent the ADU seasonally or year-round, are not doing so, are doing so in, based on what's best for their family, but also because it's the law. And people aren't going to break the law and risk the penalties, risk having, you know, the unit ripped out, all the other things that could come along with that. So I think that's in terms of the motivation there, and that's why it's been successful. And then, and, you know, as long as you have penalties, you have a, you know, a method for the town to monitor it. I think the reason that the town of Wellfleet has had challenges with monitoring its AADUs is because the program was designed to be so complex that it took a lot more effort to monitor, as opposed to the short-term rental law that was passed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which allows and requires Airbnb and other online platforms to make their information available to municipalities that want people to just cross-check. Okay, did this property have, pull a permit for an ADU and it's on the short-term rental list? Okay, you've got a fine. You've got the building inspector coming after you. So it's the ability of enforcement, it is a lot easier in this day and age. In terms of the sort of ratio around short-term rentals, I think it's important to understand the vast majority of short-term rentals are done by homeowners who just want a piece, their little piece of Cape Cod, who are, a lot of them are second homeowners coming from wherever, Boston, New York, et cetera. And they're not there the whole time. And so they rent out their short-term, they rent out their home short-term, their single-family home, short-term. A, because they're not there the whole time and it's sitting empty. And B, because they need to pay off the cost of, of the loan. That's why you see, you have seen an influx, that and because of COVID, we're seeing more people moving here. But I don't think that we should look at ADUs as being a silver bullet. I think we should look at it as being a tool in the toolkit in terms of adding supply back into the year-round housing market. And that's what this has done, not in massive orders of magnitude, but certainly it's making a difference to the people who live there. And if we add 10 units a year, let's just, let's be, that's being generous. Let's say we add five units a year.
What is the real data? How many is it?
I'm sorry?
What's the real data? How many have been added? Do we know?
I would have to, to look up. Off the top of my head, I think that Brewster was adding somewhere around the neighborhood of seven or eight per year. Eastham, last time I checked, had added maybe five a year. I think Harwich was somewhere in the magnitude of six a year. But all of the numbers were less than 10 a year, including Falmouth, which is a much larger town.
But, but still, that's great. One, one is great.
Right, exactly.
Right? So of all of those, there have been no monitoring issues?
To my knowledge, there have been not, there not, have not been. However, I would say that, I would say this. If you build a bylaw that is, you know, so narrow that no units get created, or one unit gets, gets created, or two units get created, and it's used exactly and as prescriptively as you've written it to be, okay, that's one way you could go. But if you build it, if you draft the bylaw in such a way that you can get 10 new units a year, and there's the outside chance that one or two are, you know, used inappropriately, but at some point come back into the year-round rental market as the, you know, the ownership changes of the property, that's still eight more units that are being used by year-rounders than otherwise would have been. So I just, um, I, I, I have concerns about making something so overly prescriptive that no one will use it, because that's what we have right now in most towns on the Cape, up until this, you know, these bylaw changes. And then when we have done it, um, you know, nobody's seen problems. In fact, the town of Brewster is looking at going back and making their bylaw even easier because at the time that it was passed, there were some concerns of, oh, we might need to make it, you know, they were kind of like in the middle of the process and they said, well, we want to do a little bit special permit and, and what have you. They sort of went half and half. And they have seen the success with this program, and they've said, you know what? We really like this. The sky hasn't fallen, you know? Nothing bad has happened. The people who were maybe concerned about it before aren't concerned anymore. And their planning board is looking at going back and making it even easier and closer to the model bylaw.
Stephanie?
Yes, Mr. Fox.
Do you happen to know, of the towns that have passed the ADU, the eight, the seven towns, what their water and sewer situations are? How many have town water? How many have town sewer?
Yeah, it's, um, it's a wide variety. So, and I remember this from when I came before you folks, a, a year or so ago. And so, so the towns, most of the towns that have sewer actually haven't passed this. In fact, town of Barnstable is looking at it soon. But most towns are in the same situation as Wellfleet, dealing with a, you know, challenging wastewater situation with septic capacity. You know, even, even, uh, so it's with the septic and whatnot. And others, a lot of them don't have, you know, necessarily have town water either. I think the, the crux of this bylaw and why I love it so much is because it was written by the Cape Cod Commission, which is the agency responsible for our, you know, our environmental planning, including our wastewater planning and water planning. And they wrote it in such a way that you're not gonna have any more bedrooms or any more people than you can have right now. So it's nitrogen neutral, it's water usage neutral. And the fact of the matter is, is if, if you're, you know, one of the, the planning board members mentioned, you, if you wanted to build an ADU and you're at your septic limit, you'd have to lose one bedroom in the main house. For some people, they want that choice. They may be aging and they may say, you know, we've got empty nests. We don't need four bedrooms here. Let's knock down a wall. You know, make the living room bigger or something like that, and then use that extra bedroom. But the fact of the matter is, is that a house can be sold. But the fact of the matter is, is that a house can be sold at any point. And you can go from having a house with one person in it to having a house with four people in it or five people in it. And the way that we govern around that is based on our Title V limit limitations and and rules around, the health rules around that. And so this bylaw complies with the health rules, which I think is really critical with such a fragile environment and, you know, single source aquifer that we have.
That's the concern that I'm addressing. So you, you're saying that it's completely water and nitrogen neutral?
I'm saying that it's flow neutral in terms of what is permissible under Title V, yes.
Yeah.
So, and as I mentioned, you can't, you can't take any house, regardless of whether or not it has an ADU in it, and make it completely nitrogen neutral. Because as I said, like, you could have, you know, grandma living there alone as a widow. One day she passes away, the next day the people who buy it have, you know, one person per bedroom. There's, there's no conceivable way to make it exactly neutral in that way. However, you can do it based on the bedroom count and based on the, you know, the number of people who would be living there. And that, and that is something that is built into this to be, you know, neutral to our, you know, to our wastewater situation. And and frankly, I think, you know, if we were in a situation that we didn't think that we, you know, that our, that our water table is that precarious, then, you know, we would, we would need to ban everyone from putting an addition on their house and saying, you can't put another bedroom on your house. And I think.
They would easily come.
I think the critical piece here to think about, about when it comes to ADUs is that a bedroom is a bedroom is a bedroom, right? And so it shouldn't matter whether it's a, it's a renter using it or, you know, a homeowner using it or their kid using it or what have you from the perspective of setbacks, from the perspective of lot coverage, from the perspective of septic and, you know, water quality. You know, everybody's urine's the same, not to be gross, but. And and the, so the fact of the matter is, is if you stick within your existing zoning bylaws, within your existing setbacks, within your existing septic, then it really shouldn't make a difference to neighbors, to the town's infrastructure and so on. The main issue is, is this is just giving homeowners choice in terms of how they're going to utilize their property and those bedrooms. And if they would like to have somebody living there who is, you know, someone that's a family member for now, but later on they're renting it out to, you know, you know, a shell fisherman or or a caretaker that's helping them age in place, that really doesn't, you know, impact the broader community. But it makes a difference to those homeowners and it makes a difference to the people who are living there.
Yeah. Stephanie, now, some of the other towns you mentioned, none of them which have the problems that we do. Because one of our largest problems is 70% of our land area is controlled by Uncle Sam. None of those other towns remotely have that. Brewster's a shabby example. They have huge tracts of undeveloped land. Their parameters for development and redevelopment are completely night and day different than Wellfleet's situation. So you shouldn't even use those two as comparison because they're not even comparable. We're in line with Trow and perhaps Provincetown. Those are the design models that we should be working with because those are closest models regards to land use patterns and what's available. So those other towns are nice, but they don't mean anything when it comes to Wellfleet.
Well, Provincetown allows multifamily by right. Trow allows accessory dwelling units. And Eastham, I would argue, is also pretty close to Wellfleet. And they just passed the model about, maybe I want to say two years ago at this point. They have a large tract of their land occupied by the National Seashore. And, you know, they did the same thing that the proponents of this article did, which was to say, if you're within, and this was at the recommendation, excuse me, the recommendation of National Seashore staff, that they make the, if you live in the National Seashore, make that a special permit because it gives the, it provides a little belt and suspenders approach for the homeowner to make sure that they are clear that, you know, what the rules are for the National Seashore. So I I I would say that while, you know, Wellfleet does, you know, have its own unique set of challenges, I think that there are a lot, a lot more things binding together a lot of those other outer Cape towns than there are separating them.
Question before we leave, Sharon. Stephanie, to put you back on David, a question on Eastham. Eastham just went to complete town of town water.
Yeah.
They wiped out the water problem. They made everybody hook up to water. So it is drastically different than Wellfleet in that respect.
So if I may ask, then.
I have an issue with that comparison. When we go, and maybe you can help with this, that, and that clause 5.4.7, which you kind of inadvertently referred to, specific in nature that the front side and rear requirements of the district in which it's located must be met in the lot area not less than the dwelling that is dwelling size that's required in that district. And then the last clause says, except in the case of accessory dwelling units is provided in 6.21 of these zoning bylaws. So in essence, it almost, if I read it correctly, you've got it in one hand, they're saying you've got to, you've got to meet front side, right, rear yard requirements and your lot area. And then the last sentence in bold, it says, except in the case of accessory dwelling units, which are off the table. And you, you could potentially breach them with a special permit. I mean, it's contrary. By right, you would give the neighbor no, it doesn't even say special permit there, it just says, except in the case of accessory dwelling. How does that figure with present zoning?
So I'd love to answer your last question, your first question first with regards to being on town water or whatnot. Again, it's, a bedroom is a bedroom is a bedroom. So if somebody is allowed to build an extra bedroom on their house and have another family member live there right now without it creating issues in terms of town water supply, then it shouldn't make any more difference if they do the same thing, stick a stove in it and rent it to a local.
No, I take exception with that. Wellfleet, Wellfleet has town water up Summit Street on Taylor Hill. Main Street going over an area that has all 15,000, 12,000, 10,000 square foot lots. And there are streets off of that main Summit Street, probably Summit Street coming downhill or Avenue probably has, I'll give you the benefit of doubt, 40 houses on town water. You go the backside of all of those lots and no longer on town water, they're on septic and well. There is no number, if you have town water, there is no number restriction on the number of bedrooms you have. So long as you can get a septic system on that 10,000 square foot lot, you can put as many bedrooms in there as you want. So the intensity all of a sudden gets boosted tremendously. And that's anywhere in the Wellfleet that has town water. So in the case like Eastham, they went and put in town water everywhere, but didn't change the zoning first and then had to go back and put a moratorium on from the Cape Cod Commission to analyze what uses we want to do because all of a sudden they would get permits pulled left and right because they were on town water. So they put the cart before the horse.
Exactly.
We have no restriction. In other words, and I think, and I think you certainly would know better than I do, but I think in some towns, when they go to town water, I I have heard that the Board of Health puts a restriction on there that no matter what, you will meet Title V regulations. You can't exceed Title V regulations. So if you've got an acre lot, you can't put more than four bedrooms. That's not the case in Wellfleet. If you have an acre lot in Wellfleet and you're on town water, most cases you could put in 10 bedrooms if you can put the septic system. And if you've got everybody around you with town water, you have no problem with that septic. So we do have outstanding issues that other towns don't have in place at the present time.
So that's a, so that's really enlightening. Thank you for explaining that. I I think the issue is, though, that if that is a concern for the town, then the way to address that is in terms of, you know, your, your health limitations or in terms of overall limitations on growth. My point is, is that we shouldn't be discriminating over what type of bedroom you're allowed to add. Because a bedroom is a bedroom is a bedroom. And, you know, if somebody could build a 10 bedroom house right now, you know, in Wellfleet, and there's nothing to stop them and you have concerns about that, then I think that's a different policy conversation. But I think that if, or if the Board of Health has similar concerns, then that's a place for them to address it. But, you know, saying that ADUs can't be built because, but but regular bedroom additions can be, just isn't consistent to me in terms of what is the overall water usage. It doesn't, you know, you can't tell me that a renter is going to use up more water than a homeowner.
Okay. But to that point, Stephanie, a bedroom is a bedroom. It looks like a duck and walks like a duck. It's a duck, right? Okay. I won't argue that point. As a builder, I've, I've, I've used that in pulling building permits. However, when you all of a sudden have two bedrooms in a main house and you have two car parking lots and you have a septic system and you have a wooded area around it, and then you want to build an accessory dwelling and you've got to expand your septic system and pull out the leach pits and go to leach fields and take down trees. Now you want to build an accessory dwelling unit, take down more trees. Now you've got to take down some more because you've got parking. A bedroom isn't a bedroom anymore. It is more than a bedroom. And two teenagers don't cook, don't do laundry like a new family that's got three, two kids in diapers. So, no, I can't buy that. Two dwelling units on a property, to me, is more expansive than a four bedroom house. And I can't buy that argument. I'm sorry.
Well, Jerry, I think that was substantiated in that article that was written in 85 in the town zoning requiring additional lot area for additional residential units. So this discussion was had over 40 years ago and they came to that very same conclusion that multiple units do require more land area than a single family residence. That's why they put that number in there of 8,000 square feet.
I think we're missing the the broader concept here, though, of the ADU bylaw, which is that it's accessory in use and it's meant to fit in with your existing zoning. And so if you couldn't build an accessory structure of some kind, then you wouldn't be able to build an exterior freestanding accessory dwelling unit. If you, but most, most ADUs that get built are ones that are in people's basements. They're, you know, if you take a Cape house and it's got a separate entrance and you turn the upstairs into the ADU, in some cases you might, you know, put an addition on, but you're not necessarily adding anything more, not, not just not necessarily. You're not adding anything that you can't already add right now. And.
Okay, I got to challenge that one again. If you put, and I just learned something today, an in-law apartment is an in-law apartment, which is a relationship with the owner of the property and not a tenant. If you put a, if you change any part of your house like this bylaw would, would do, and it reflects back to our AAdu probably as well. If you put another dwelling into an existing structure, that now becomes a multifamily.
Fire separation, yes.
Well, number one, it it becomes a multifamily. Number two, multifamilies in the town of Wellfleet are only allowed by special permit in the commercial district. Number three, to David's point, you now must meet all fire codes and the building code no longer is under the residential building code. It is now under the multifamily building code.
Yes, and we want people to be safe and 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 we want people to comply with the building code. And in fact, by making it legal, you are then encouraging people who have illegal units to come out into the light, bring them up to code and make them safer for the people who are living there.
We have 50 units in the town of Wellfleet that are totally illegal. They will not be brought up by this bylaw. They weren't brought up by the AAdu bylaw either. What I'm.
Jerry, 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 I'd like.
The other concern I have is, I think, and I may be wrong, and I know there's going to be some exceptions. And you've, you've got the experience more than, more than we do with other towns. Wellfleet has had some success with our AAdu bylaw over the past 12, 15 years. We've had about 15, 17 units. However, because of our own, as you, as you put, we've got our, our, our own problems with that. We've lost six already, gone by the wayside someplace, but we, we know they're being rented. Part of this petition bylaw, and I may be, I'm sorry, Stephanie, if I'm addressing it to you and not to somebody else.
I'm happy to answer.
I think, I think you might have, I think you might have a handle on outside the overall Cape Cod is, is to see the opening line motion. To see if the town will vote to delete 6.21 affordable accessory dwelling units of the Wellfleet zoning bylaw. So in essence, with a stroke of a pen, if this bylaw goes in, all of the 15 of which, 15 or 16 of which five we can't even find, all of a sudden become by right. They walk, they're going to walk right back into the Board of Appeals. They're going to say, release my special permit restriction on my deed. I'm going the open meeting. I'm going the open market route to get my tax benefit of a couple hundred dollars. I'm taking my rent that's down to 800, 900 dollars a month and I'm upping it to 15, 16, 17, 100 bucks and I'm out for the dollar. And we're all of a sudden going to lose the ground, I think. Now, there's an exception. One of them is, one of the planning board members that I don't think would do it because she's got the passion. But when you come down to dollars and cents, the majority of those people are going to say, thank you very much. I no longer have a special permit on my property. I no longer have to go to Affordable. I'm going open market and we're going to lose them all.
Yeah, I remember that conversation and I am very sensitive to it. In fact, I think all of the petitioners are. And I remember, I remember that conversation that we had a year, year and a half ago. And in fact, I think that the petitioners really listened to the concerns that you had on that. And, and in fact, I put together a pretty extensive memo of different ways that the town, sorry, I have a geriatric cat who's very insistent on like getting on the table here. But I think, you know, the, I wrote a, a pretty extensive memo here about how, all the different ways that you can approach that particular problem because it is an important one. The issue is, is that you can't, you can't mandate affordability and have it end up producing units. The, the, the problem with the AAdu bylaw is it's just, it's too complex. It, it treats homeowners like deep pocketed developers who've got a staff, you know, that they can have doing all this sort of updating to the state housing inventory list and all this sort of stuff. And also because, you know, there are some limitations, as has been mentioned. Building an ADU can be expensive. Construction costs are expensive. And so the homeowner, the math has to work. The homeowner has to be able to make back. And so the homeowner, the math has to work. The homeowner has to be able to make back the cost of their monthly home loan. So the way that you get at affordability isn't to mandate it, it's to incentivize it. Now, I think that the town has a fantastic incentive program with their, their tax code, but that doesn't have to be the end of the toolkit for you all. You know, you can use your Community Preservation Act funds, your Affordable Housing Trust funds, to create essentially a rent buydown program. Those are all across the Cape. Towns have rent buydown programs, and you can enter into the same kind of agreement with the existing homeowner to say, hey, can you keep it at the same level if we offset, you know, the rent by whatever that amount is? And that's a, that's an easy tool that you can use in order to achieve the goal that you're trying to achieve. My concern is, is that when we try to, you know, achieve that goal of preserving those units at the cost of not building more, more units that could be rented by a variety of people who need it and who don't qualify for capital A affordable housing.
Okay.
I know.
Any,
Jerry, I have a question, and it may be out of turn. If, because we can't talk about it, but if the town of Wellfleet submits its own bylaw, is there any latitude in amending that? Or is that considered a petitioned article the same way for us to come from the Board of Selectmen?
The town, well, the town of, you saw in your packets. I got to be real careful on this one.
I'm going to ask a question much simpler, so we don't get into a conversation then.
Thank you. Well, I can answer part of it. Is you, in your packets for tonight's meeting, was the information on the hearing scheduled for the next planning board meeting on the nineteenth of the selectman's article very similar to this with minor changes in one paragraph? That is not a petitioned article. That is an article by the Board of Selectmen that we still must have a public hearing on. I believe we have to follow, and I, you know, in all the years I've been around, I have not ever seen a selectman's article, zoning article. I know I have, we've scheduled a public hearing, which we had to do, but I'm not too sure, Alfred, if it follows the exact same guidelines that we can't change it. We can certainly make a report to David Mead Fox's, make a report. Maybe the selectman can make a, make a change on town meeting floor. But I think it's going to be still the same problem the moderator must face is going to be, it can't be substantially different than what's proposed. But there is an article that we're going to be looking at on the nineteenth, similar to this one, similar to this one.
Okay, and then my next question to the part of that, maybe this was towards David Mead Fox, too, is if he's looking to do a punch list, so to speak, which we probably won't get done tonight, we can also vote to make a recommendation to be handed out on town meeting floor. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
Do you understand that, David?
Yeah, so essentially hand out our, a report?
Yeah. We don't, what I'm trying to say is, we can take the time, if you really have the energy, which I think we do, to make a decent report as a handout on town meeting floor, instead of voting on it tonight with what our report would be.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, I'm starting to think about this as a two-step process, actually. So I can envision whether we, whether we recommend, let's just say we begin conceptually to say this, the first step is to pass this bylaw. Second step is to hopefully generate it by our report, by other discussions, by meetings, et cetera, et cetera, is to make it better. To make it better or to make sure we have carrots, make sure we have enforcement, make sure we don't end up with just tons of Airbnbs and nothing else. All that stuff can be, I believe, however hard it is, can be dealt with. And that, we could think about that as part two.
But I guess my state question in that to you is, to Jerry, if that's okay?
That's okay.
I'm just going to keep going.
Fine. I'll stop you if necessary.
Okay, so my question is, or my thought is, we're going to see something, excuse me, we're going to see something different at our next meeting. At that point, we're going to have another group of people with hopefully different ideas. And my personal opinion is, if we're going to write a report to this, I would like to take the ideas from both meetings and create it in the report.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. Why not?
Absolutely.
So at that point,
I see you, Beth.
Not, at that point, I would prefer we didn't end this conversation right now, but to continue this so that we can deal with it at the next meeting to take the best out of both of them to make our report best. And if we vote on this tonight, we may, I'm not saying not to vote on this, but we may end our discussion on this one tonight where we could use useful stuff from this discussion if we can continue it along.
Jerry.
Uh, Beth.
I don't see how we can vote to recommend or not recommend this petition when we have one still to be heard. I, I think we have to hear both, take in all the information, all the opinions, and then make our decision.
Thank you, Beth. I think that's a wise, wise course of action.
My intention was before I got a sense from any one of the planning board members that I would put forward and remind the members that we do have that zoning bylaw from the selectman on the nineteenth. Now, with all due respect to the petitioned article that is before us, ninety-nine and three-quarters percent of the petitioned article is word for word, eye for eye, tea for tea, as that article coming from the selectman with a caveat at the end. However, that can't be discussed tonight. It seems that it, it would be prudent because the way the warrant now, because of town, of what's happening in town hall, that we've now pushed off the town meeting to late June, that the warrant is not going to print as of this week. Will not go to print for another week or so. Whatever we decide probably will not be in the warrant as far as our vote goes. That, the vote is simply a recommendation because we've got, we've got three other, three other recommendations we have to make on certain subjects for the warrant that are already in the warrant. So we've got a work ahead of us.
I'd like to make a motion.
I don't think,
Beat me to it.
I, um, okay, motion, because we can discuss it, right? Because I have a bunch of questions, and there's at least one planning board member who hasn't said a word this whole, who hasn't had a chance to say anything.
Certainly have given everybody a chance to talk. All right, so is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we continue the petitioned article for a vote until our next meeting.
A second.
There is, there is a second. So it's been moved and seconded to continue this to the meeting on the nineteenth. Now, this is now open for discussion. Bonnie.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just trying to clarify something that you said. You said, well, first, with the reason we were making this motion was because it was, because there is a very similar article, but coming from the select board that we're considering on the nineteenth.
Yes.
And then, Jerry, you said, I believe, that the select board version is exactly the same.
No.
Except, it's, I said it's ninety-nine and three-quarters percent the same. There is, I haven't read it, but what I understand is there is maybe one set, one sentence that is changed in that. Now, how much of a change that is, Bonnie, I'm not sure at this point, number one. And even if I was, we couldn't discuss it.
Got it.
It's got to be advertised, and that hearing is on the nineteenth. So based on the fact that there is something there, I, I feel that the, the motion is at least consistent because we can't recommend both of them.
Why not?
I thought I was,
Recommend both. Really? There was not enough confusion on town meeting floor going on right now?
Please, Jerry, do we know what our deadline is?
We have time, and, and I think the last I knew David Mead Fox, town hall was still working on getting the warrant together. It would not surprise me, and I, Bruce is here, but where did Danny go?
But even if we're after the warrant, we can do it on town meeting floor.
Yeah, what happens is the warrant goes to, all of this stuff that we're going to see, this, this petitioned article is already on the warrant.
Right.
Selectman's article, no matter what we do, is on the warrant. The items that we have to recommend are already in the warrant. All that that warrant is waiting for, if we have time, before it goes to print, is in writing our recommendation would be in the warrant.
Right, so when does it go to print?
But we don't have to do it to print. We can do it on town meeting floor.
I understand. Absolutely. We do it all the time.
It's a law for affirmative for attendees to see it in the warrant, and I just was curious about what that deadline is.
Well, it, it, in this, in the case, in the case of a zoning bylaw that we prepare, we like to get it, our, normally if we prepare a zoning bylaw, the recommendation, if we've gone that far, is we recommend the article on town meeting floor. We like to see that in the warrant, so it's visual.
Right, right.
I'm sure, and I certainly will not speak for the petitioners of this article. I'm sure they would like to see us meet on it and vote on it tonight, because they would be assured that that particular recommendation, either for, against, or no recommendation, would be on the warrant in writing. It certainly gives some more credibility because, you know, people read it. But it is absolutely not necessary. It simply means that we make an oral presentation on town meeting floor, and instead of the normal procedure, the first thing is, there was no recommend, there was no recommendation from the planning board. Do you now have a recommendation? Because we have to have. And that is read on town meeting floor. Sometimes that's better because it's right in front of the people. It's a, you know, it's just the way it is. You don't know on town meeting until the vote is finally taken.
Yeah, yeah.
So what we have on the floor is a discussion, moved and seconded to move this decision over to the nineteenth. Is there any additional discussion on that motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Beth?
Yeah, I vote for postponement till next, next meeting. I vote yes for the motion.
Yes. Elga?
I'll vote for a postponement.
Bonnie?
Um, I'll vote for postponement.
Uh, David, roll.
Clemency from the governor. Yes, postponement.
Thank you, David. Alfred?
I vote aye.
David Mead Fox?
Aye.
I vote aye. That's unanimous. So the, the vote will be taken after we have the public hearing on the selectman's meeting. So that will settle that. Is there a question? Because this came up from Olga at our last meeting. I'm sorry, Beth, do you want to?
I just want to ask, when we get the select boards,
You have it. It's in your packet.
No, it isn't.
No, I was going to ask if that one sentence or however many sentences could be highlighted.
Okay.
To make it easier.
To the best of my knowledge, Bonnie?
I don't think we have it.
We don't have it. We, I, I got one document that is in Word, and it says petitioned AUD, or ADU article. Then I got something in PDF that is just the notice of the hearing.
I got two.
We got it as a separate email.
Oh.
Yeah, I know it went out. Because I did it, I did it exactly like I did this one, instructed, Karen, oh wait, but Karen's still there. Karen?
Oh, yeah. Email.
Karen, did the,
Yes.
Did the proposed article by the selectman go out to the planning board members?
I'm not sure.
I got it.
Yeah.
Petitioned article.
The, the article by the select,
Yeah, well, I got it.
That we've advertised.
I got both.
That went out, didn't it?
Yes.
Did you get both together?
The one that was advertised, the one that was advertised.
That's all I got.
You didn't send out the article? Okay, I'll tell you what, board members, I will have Karen send that out tomorrow.
Look at, look at April thirtieth at twelve twenty-three PM. We all got it as of that date and time.
Yeah, April thirtieth, okay.
April thirtieth. I got right to form.
All right, I'll tell, I'll tell you what.
That's all I got.
All right, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to ask Karen to do it tomorrow. She will redo it just to make sure you all have it, okay?
And she will highlight the difference?
I like the, the sentences that are,
I think a couple words like and.
Yep, I'll, I'll talk to her about it. Okay, now to all this point. We had a discussion at the last meeting about town council. Is there anything, because I think I still have time, is there anything that came up tonight that the planning board feels they had a question that was imperative that we send up to town council to get clarification? Or are we okay based on what we, where we are at the present time? Because town council is, I mean, it's, and I, I don't mean to diminish it, but it, it's got to be a very serious question because town council is just bomb, not only with, with our town meeting, but with everybody else's right now.
Jerry, I got lots of questions, but how about this one? There again, it goes back to that certificate of occupancy. Once Paul has issued it, that's it. They can use it. Now, it says you have to register, but you can't link those two. You can't prevent that, and that does not override. Those are standalone issues.
Okay.
And that's why I say that's open to abuse.
Okay. Would,
That would be my question to town council is, those are standalone issues. A CO is a CO, and you can't link it. Wellfleet can't link that, that validity of that CO to the, they can't do that. It's the town coat tailing on state code. That's trying to rewrite code. You don't have that authority, no matter how many unicorns are attached. Doesn't work that way.
So we'll need a vote on it, but So, we'll need a vote on it, but I, are the other members in agreement to send that question up to town council? Yes or no?
You might be getting more general.
I, I think, well...
It's very specific, I, I, it's just specific to the article. That's why I wanted to keep narrow its focus. And it's that section of the article that says, you know, once the CO has been issued, then it's, then it's the responsibility of the, um, uh, the property owner to go down and get all the rest of the paperwork. It's my contention that that CO gives him the right to do anything. You can occupy it. You can't prevent him from occupying it and you can't force him to rent it.
So, you're focusing, David, David Ralph, you're focusing specifically on clause 6.21.3.2?
I do believe, yes.
My word for it, that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, once a certificate of occupancy is issued, does the town have any, any route for monitoring or, or supervising or, or whatever? Or is that a dead end? That now you have freedom to do whatever you want because you have a, a CO?
That's basically the question.
That's the question.
Yeah, that's basically the question. I, I do believe, that's where I'm getting at. It's just, once that CO is issued.
I think it's a very good question.
Yeah, once it's been issued, I don't, I think you can try to link it, but you can't prevent him from using it. And therefore his freedom is, 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 is to do is what he wants.
So, what are the limitations?
Yep, I get it.
If any.
Elga?
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Are you allowed to ask what a corrective measure would be if that is not, if this is a problem?
I can't...
Execution.
Again, it's a situation where it's a petitioned article and...
Can't change it.
You can't change it because, I mean, I could try and, Elga, I could try and get to Danny, I could try and get to Danny, but is...
But, but Jerry, even if we can't change it, it could be part of our report.
Oh, absolutely.
Right.
Oh, yeah, 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 no.
Be good information to have.
Yes, but that's not where Elga's going. Go ahead, Elga.
And can't, can't we change the Select Board's version?
No, no, that one's advertised too.
Article, but it's coming from the Select Board.
I asked that question to see if the Select Board could and we should find that out. Because my concern with, with David Ralph's thing is if that's correct and we can't, they can't do that, would the Attorney General have a tendency to throw the whole article out?
Well, that's the problem I'd, I'd have to ask. It's not, and I know where you're going, Elga, but it's a situation where I don't, they did it at a meeting. They didn't even vent or have invented at any additional meetings and discussed the bylaw itself. All they did was add a sentence at one meeting. They haven't publicly had meetings on that article. It's already in the warrant. It's already been advertised. So, I'm not sure what they can do. I think probably, I think it's within probably the planning board's bailiwick to ask the question to town council without stepping on the selectmen's toes. I mean, it's been sent to us and they have to send it to us. So consequently, we could, I could ask.
So, what I'm saying is how can we link it? Can we ask county, town council that question? Or are they only gonna say, the way it's written, not legal?
Well, that's what I want to find out. I'm looking to change it, Elga. I'm looking to find out if it's legal. I don't really care.
If it's not legal, what is the solution?
Rewrite the bylaw next year.
That would probably be, that would probably be the solution. But that is also a question that could be asked on town meeting floor. In other words, when we have a zoning bylaw, many times somebody from the audience would ask, okay, what's the ramifications of this particular article? And town council weighs in and says, okay, if you pass it, it's probably gonna be turned down by the Attorney General. It's gonna have this problem or that problem. There's inconsistency. You, as a town of Wealthly, have the final vote, but here's the problems you're gonna probably see.
But if we had a zoning...
When we, as a planning board, propose a zoning bylaw, we draw it, send it up to town council. Town council does the same thing we do, they vent it. They call up to the Attorney General's office and say, okay, here's the, here's the zoning bylaw that I've got. Is this contrary? You're gonna have a problem with it? And they head off the problem and call us. Or they call us and say, okay, you can pass this, but I'm not too, the, the state Attorney General's gonna come back and warn you that we'll sign it. However, we're not standing behind what's gonna happen if it's go, goes to court because it may lose. So, those, those things can happen.
But Bruce?
Taking away, I see you, Bruce. I take, we taking a vote? That's done. The vote's over. Okay, Bruce, yes?
Jerry, you can ask town council anything you want, but a CO attaches to a use. If a CO is granted in accordance with a particular use, it's only good as long as the use is used in accordance with the bylaw. If you're, if a CO is granted for an ADU and there's no longer an ADU, you don't have your CO.
I don't believe it works that way.
I think, I think you're right to the point where, yeah, you don't have the, you're right to use it as a, a DU, but you still have the right to use it, the bathroom and the bedrooms. That's the question. Are they gonna make you rip it down? Because if they're gonna make you rip it down, now we got an enforcement situation, just like the ADUs, because the ADUs are special permits. Is Wealthly even gonna go there? That's a, that's a whole different bailiwick.
Well, Jerry, it's all...
Floor, they're gonna rip, if they, if they don't use it properly, you're gonna rip down a $300,000 structure. I don't know what's gonna happen, Bruce.
The way it's written is part of the problem.
I, I, I thank you for the input. I don't think it hurts to ask town council if we can get town councils. I think it just...
Okay.
It reiterates clearly what you just said, if that's what she comes back with, or he, whoever, whoever they send it up to.
Jerry, do you need a motion to go to town council?
Um, I'd like one. I'd, I'd love one.
Can we ask other questions?
Yep, what do you want to?
Well, I, I think there, there are different interpretations of the effect of Title V on this bylaw. And my feeling is that we don't have to think about Title V. We're doing an ADU bylaw. And Title V could change tomorrow. We don't want to say the bylaw's no good because of Title V. So, I would like town council to advise us as, as to why we, some people on the board want to use the definition of new construction, uh, which I interpret differently than they do, that, that interpretation of new construction makes the whole bylaw invalid.
Doesn't make it invalid.
It makes it difficult to...
Not make it invalid.
Subject to Title V.
It makes it much more difficult and limits the structures that can do it or the properties that can do it a lot more. It doesn't make the bylaw invalid.
Okay, I was hearing that and...
No, I was clear, clear and clear on that.
Okay.
It doesn't invalidate it, it just limits to those properties that are 30,000 square feet and above and anything that, that is already in compliance. So, if you have a thirty, you might have a 30,000 square foot lot, but it might have a four-bedroom system on it. That's a protected system, that's not a compliant system. They would lose a bedroom under this bylaw. That's why the complications come up.
I would need my health agent to decide. I'm not, um...
Okay, go ahead.
I can't, I, 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 really, that's not, that's, it's not where I want to go.
Right now.
If you want to go with the town council and the board wants to go with town council on that, on that question, fine.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion. I don't know what that, that six-point-whatever part was.
It was, uh, 6.21.3.2.
I would like to make the motion for that number to go to town council.
I think David seconded. Did I second? I'll second it.
No, I did second.
Oh, I'm sorry, David Mead, I, I missed it. Uh, second, any discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor? I'll see if anyone opposed.
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay. Good. Karen? Do we have, is there anything besides the warrant article from the selectmen on the schedule for the 19th yet?
No, nothing yet.
Okay, so the cell tower is gonna be June 2nd. What about...
You could pick a color there.
What about how old Hightoss Bridge Road? Have you got that? You haven't got that yet?
No.
We have to also, things like this right-to-farm bylaw, we have to deal with that sometime?
Yeah.
Right, no, right to, okay, right-to-farm bylaw is a general bylaw. So, it's the exact same thing, basically, is this a recommendation, no recommendation?
Right, right.
Right.
Needs to be on an agenda.
Yes.
Why don't we have on an agenda recommendations for town meeting? And then we can put them all in there.
Well, I really, I really should be specific. What I'm trying to decide, Beth, is, and board members, we have this petitioned article that we put over to the selectmen's article hearing on the 19th. We don't, we don't have to write the letter or the report. All we need to do is make a vote on those two articles. Either recommend, not recommend, or no recommendation. And, you know, hopefully we'll recommend, not recommend, or no recommendation on one and the other gets put down. Should we consider on the 19th, any additional hearings? And they're not really this kind of degree of hearings with public. They're basically just recommendations. They don't need to go and be advertised.
That, that's what I was suggesting, Jerry, is that we, we make it flexible.
Should I put it on the 19th, Beth? Or should I put it off to the 2nd, which, which is the... Which is the, um, uh, the council, I'm sorry, uh, Nukem Telephone, uh, Tower.
Well, right now, that's the only thing on the agenda, but it probably won't stay that way.
Right, so do you want to put any more on the 19th? I mean, do you want to discuss, um, Hightoss Bridge Road as far as we recommend or not recommended be taken for the town, uh, for a town road? Do you want to discuss, uh, the farm general permit for, um, general farming, right to farm?
I'm, I'm just thinking, I'm just, I'm just thinking, sometimes it takes us more than one meeting. So, if we can work through some of the details and then vote at the next meeting, gives us a little time.
All right, so what we can do, how about this? What if, I can put those three items on the agenda for the 19th. Because there's no public hearing situation, appetizing situation, we can always move it to the first meeting in June.
Right, if we don't get to it.
If we don't get to it.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Sounds good.
Not, there's not going to be, this, I say this and it always comes back to bite me, there shouldn't be a tremendous amount of discussion on the article by the selectmen with that one sentence. It's either we, we, we're gonna yes or no on that. We basically have gone over most of the petitioned article and I...
My, my guess is that more of our time will be spent on, um, planning for our report and on our vote.
And if you choose to do that, fine, at that meeting, but you could also put it off to...
Oh, or we could subcommittee it.
Yes, you could.
Yeah, all of the above.
All right, I'm gonna put that on, I'll get that on the next agenda. And that way we can put it off if we have to. At least the, the selectmen know that we're working on it. I mean, they keep throwing stuff at the last, I don't know how much more they can throw at the last minute and expect us to be able to take it out before town meeting. Uh, Sharon?
You're muted. Sharon, you're muted.
Yeah, she's working on it.
She's not.
I can't hear you.
Sharon, unmute. I don't...
Think she's getting some help right now.
There you are.
There's David. Can you hear me yet, Sharon?
She can hear you, we can't hear her.
We can't hear you.
Hey, that's a trademarked line.
Hold on. Yeah, I, I apologize for that.
Okay, there we go.
So, I'm getting the sense that this meeting is over, but there was never really an opportunity for public, um, comment or, or response to anything that, um, that you all were saying. Am I wrong there?
Well, we had several interchanges with several different people.
That was the beginning of the meeting.
But I had my hand up for, um, quite a while and I wanted to respond. By now, I've sort of forgotten the things that I've wanted to respond to, but, so I, I'm just wanting to, to say that I hope the next meeting, I understand that, you know, you, it's only a few changes and we're can't, we're not discussing that now, but I would like an opportunity for the public to have a little bit of time to say things.
So, so Jerry, can I just answer that? So, so the, the beginning of the meeting was the public hearing and everybody was invited to speak by Jerry. He kept asking, does anyone want to speak? Once the, once the planning board goes into discussion, that's, that's the second phase of the meeting. The public hearing comes first. It's not an interactive thing after...
I guess, I guess I did not understand that, but I, I feel like, you know, uh, there ought to be an opportunity to respond to some of the...
Absolutely.
...made by the planning board and I don't feel like there was any opportunity for that.
Well, your opportunity is to speak in front of the planning board.
I know, but I want to be able to...
To respond to it.
I need to be able to...
Wait a minute, Beth.
Why didn't we see your, why didn't we see your hand?
All right, let's reel it in. Let's reel it in.
Raise your hand.
I, I did give what I thought was enough. I have not closed the hearing aspect of this meeting. That's number one.
People have left Kathleen Bacon. She didn't get to...
None of them said anything.
They had their hand up.
They had their hand up.
This is what I was trying to say. There's a bunch of people with their hand up and somehow it doesn't get noticed by the person leading the meeting. And we did have interactions with Bruce and other people after the public hearing part, so it's...
Because the hands were up.
No, the public... Okay, the public hearing has not been closed. Okay?
At this point, though, like, and like Bonnie said, many people have left. So...
Well, they, if, if they leave, they left without asking, number one. And number two, it, the meeting has been, it is still open and has been continued to the 19th. Until I close the meeting, the hearing, it is open to anybody that wants to speak.
All right, so on the 19th, then, I will lead out with my responses to a number of the comments that... All right, so on the 19th, then, I will lead out with my responses to a number of the comments that were made by planning board members tonight.
Once I get to that, the first thing on the agenda will be the selectmen's hearing. Get that on the floor because that's advertised.
Which I'll present.
So yes, but the public meeting has not been closed. I'm sorry, public hearing has not been closed. So the public is still available to comment. And I said in the bridge, in the beginning of this meeting, this is the most individuals we have had on a Zoom meeting. You've got to be outspoken, and every time I saw somebody raise a hand, I called on.
My hand was up almost the whole.
You, you also have a right to say, open that mic and say, listen, I want to speak.
In response to that.
I'm too.
Sorry.
Gerald, in response to that, uh, this is Peter, not Sarah, and I would like to speak.
Who, who am I talking to?
This is Peter, sorry. Not Sarah, but it's.
Peter who?
Sarah's tile.
It's not on Zoom.
Peter who?
You know.
Yes, he is. He's under Sarah's name.
Under Sarah's name.
All I see is Sarah. All I see is Sarah.
All right, here, let me.
It's Peter.
Yeah, hold on, I'm turning my camera on. Here, this is Peter.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, I.
Peter who?
Russell.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, I'm going under the maximum assuming positive intent here, but, um, you know, just, I happened to notice that the people who weren't called on, who did have their hands raised, there are about maybe three of them, were all women. And several people who were not women.
Don't, I'm sorry, don't even go there. Don't even go there. Okay? I don't know how many women I have talked to tonight. Don't go there.
No, I, I, I just wanted to make that observation. I, like I said, I assume positive intent. I know it's, it's, you know, we've had. I'm unmute.
I'm over that.
Thank you. So this public hearing is still open until the meeting on the 19th. So if someone, Sharon, that you know wanted to speak, make sure they know to come back on the 19th and we will hear it if they've got something new to say.
Jerry, it's Karen. Jerry?
Yes.
You have Elaine with her hand up if you want to talk to, uh, is it Elaine?
Elaine McElroy.
She has her, she has her hand up.
But she's not visible.
No, she is to me. She is to me, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I, I just wanted to say that it became, it had become obvious to me that those of us that did, um, work so hard on the bylaw do need to be prepared to speak up in much more, um, depth at the beginning or, or in response, um, to questions that came up, and, and we will be prepared to do that. I think we felt that since this was the petitioned bylaw, maybe that wasn't as much our place to do that. So I, I would promise that on the 19th, you know, the, the four of us that worked on the bylaw, you know, we sat through long meetings with you and, and we did hear your concerns and we listened to your concerns and we did our best as we wrote the bylaw to keep them in mind, to look at our current zoning bylaws and say, does this support what we want to do? And we feel that it does. We wanted to focus on the positives as, as opposed to the obstacles. A lot of the obstacles are hypotheticals, which can generate really long discussions that don't go anywhere. So I just want to say we will be more prepared, I think, tonight to have Karen or I go through, um, everything we've probably written down, you know, if we have another opportunity to do that on the 19th, then we will plan to do that. But, but I do just want to say, um, you know, we have confidence in our zoning bylaws and that, that this bylaw fits into them. We added, um, sections on monitoring and enforcement and stronger penalties. We discussed it with the health agent, we discussed it with the building inspector. Bruce Behrens was generous with his time, Harry Turpinian was generous with his time. Um, other, the other towns that have done this, their bylaws passed town council, they passed the attorney general. We studied them, we know that they weren't producing huge numbers, so it was an opportunity to begin. I, I really appreciated what Bruce said about, um, and we want the public to hear this. We want the public to have a chance to weigh in, and you know that often that doesn't happen until town meeting. You know, most people don't come to public hearings.
No, they don't.
So we, we do want the public to have a chance to weigh in. We would real, you know, the thought that this could pass and as the year goes by, we can continue to work together to improve it if, if it needs to, study it in, in action. You know, you've given us a lot of time. We do understand your concerns and we feel like we've put together a bylaw that, um, works and can work, and if it needs improvement, let's do it after it's in action and let's do it together at that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Town, town meeting floor, you as the petitioners, like tonight, you've got to expect to speak up because you're the one who's going to answer. They may call on the planning board to, to answer a few questions, but the, the pointed questions are going to come to you guys. I mean, you are the petitioners. So, you know.
That's why we're asking the pointed questions.
I, I would, I agree. I would also just like to say, we want you to convince us. We want to join you.
Thank you.
So anything you can do to help us is greatly appreciated. Because we do see obstacles, we see negatives, we're cynical, whatever. You give us the opportunity to get past that.
I love Cool-Aid.
And you really do, you know, I, I'm sitting here and I'm trying to, I'm trying to run a meeting and yet look at 19, 22 people here. And I've got to concentrate on what people are saying. And if I miss a hand going up and some people think they're waving a hand, but they're not really waving a hand, you got to speak up, so, um, but I generally been accused by planning board members of being really very lenient on letting people speak and, and not cutting them off, so to have somebody even begin to think that I, I shortchanged somebody would never, ever be intentional. Um, and I think most of you know that. Bonnie?
Yeah, I have a, a suggestion because when the meeting, uh, goes beyond a certain size, even when you have a gallery view, there's actually two different screens. So who's, whoever is monitoring, and I don't know if that's Karen.
Karen.
Whoever's monitoring who has their hand up is going to have to switch back and forth between two screens in order to see everybody. So I, that's a part of the problem is logistical and that's.
It shouldn't be the case. We should be able to have 30 people on one screen.
Uh, it doesn't work that way.
It does.
Well, at one point in my year, I had. Upper right-hand corner. I had two screens. You know, I had, I had like 20 people on one screen and 10 on another.
Well, I only got one screen.
We all only have one.
Yeah, now there's only one screen. There's a lot, a bunch of people have left.
But, but I, I teach 28 students and I have them all on one screen. Did we have 28 people? This, this shouldn't be a problem.
Well. There was 28 total, and if you, upper right-hand corner is the view of what you want on your screen. I don't have control on your screen.
And it should be on gallery.
Yeah, I haven't.
The back of my mind gallery is 20 people.
Oh, no, it's not.
Then you go, well, at least that's.
On our computers, it is.
And then you go to a second page.
That's not me. Yeah.
Yeah, and I've never had to go to a second page, so I, I try and.
Because Jerry, you and I are hosts. The hosts get the whole thing.
Yeah, okay. Um, all right, um, we got the agenda. This meeting's continued to, I'm sorry, public hearing. The public hearing is still open and continued to the 19th. Okay, so no more discussion on, on that. Minutes.
There seems to have been a couple of issues with the minutes. So I corrected a spelling error and I removed two names that were on the FinCom board. That is the only changes I made. And I did ask if those changes could be made and I was, said that I could do that. And that's all I changed.
Right.
So are we going to pass the minute to the meeting?
Yeah, but before we pass the minutes to the meeting, the process on meetings on minutes is the planning board secretary is in charge of drafting the minutes. Once that draft is finished, it is available to the general public. The planning board secretary has the tapes and all of the information of what is said. If a planning board member has a change, they can submit that if they would like, once it hits their packet, to the individual, to the planning board secretary in writing. But she is instructed to not make those changes until it comes back to town, to this meeting. Otherwise, we have chaos on our hands. Changes to the minutes are not made until this public meeting. If you have something you want to change and you want to put it in writing and send it into her, get it, that's fine, but they are not to be made. Otherwise, we don't know what we're working on, we've got too many drafts out there for the general public. That's the way the procedure works, and the individual responsible for that draft is the planning board secretary. Are we all on the same wavelength? Bonnie?
So, when my memory from back when Rebecca was secretary and Andy Freeman was on the board, is that before Rebecca sent the minutes in the packet, she would send them to Andy for comments and edits, and then there'd, then, then we would.
No, no.
No.
What would happen is, Andy, we would get the minutes at the meeting, Andy would say, I had some minor changes. Were they constructive? No. We would take a vote at the meeting and say, okay, Rebecca, make the changes. Some of us wouldn't even say them. Make the changes Andy, um, suggested to you. We voted to approve them, end of conversation. She does not, the secretary does not discuss those minutes with any of us, or me. She is in charge of those minutes.
We, we actually vote to accept the minutes as amended when suggestions for changes are made publicly in our meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That's probably the law.
Okay.
All right.
Got it.
So. Please follow those, please follow those rules.
Imagine poor Karen if each of us was calling her and asking her to make changes.
Yeah.
Would you do that?
I want to say that I wrote in an email that I didn't know who these two people were who were listed as members and there were, and the word council was spelled wrong. I didn't say change it, you know, but I did what I was supposed to do.
Well, theoretically.
At the meeting.
Theoretically, that should be done at the meeting. The minutes come out, if they come out with a mistake, that's what we vote on them, that's why we vote on them in public meeting.
But you said to put it in writing.
If you want to put it in writing, fine, at least she's got it there and we can say no, but she's not going to send them out because otherwise we've got too much to deal with. Really, you should hold all that stuff to this particular moment in time when we vote on the minutes. That's the time to do it. Not when you get the package, when you get that draft. Otherwise, we have a situation just like tonight, which is fine, it's simple, but it's, it's sort of like, okay, to best point. If two or three people weigh in on this thing, and all of a sudden she's sending stuff out, there's too many drafts floating around and have all of a sudden, because the press has the right once a draft is complete to request that before we even see it. It's public record. Now, all of a sudden, if changes are made before we see them and there's two or three different drafts out there and the public says, wait a minute, the paper says, wait a minute, what are you doing? We just don't need that, so. Those are the rules that we need to follow, especially in an open, open meeting room, so I would appreciate if you would do that. It'll make everybody's job easier. Karen is, is also, I'll get Karen, has just kicked into this job, it's a learning process, believe me, I mean Rebecca's Rebecca was green when she came in and it took two and a half years for her to learn it, so, uh, it's a learning process for all of us. I'm still learning. Every day.
Thank God I know everything.
I know. Thank God I got you, David. David D. Fox.
I have a question about the draft minutes. I just noticed this now, that under the finish of contractors yard, that whole section.
Yeah.
The very end to be continued on May 19th, the board meeting. If that means definition of contractors yard or home businesses or what, but that's.
Yeah, I put it, this was done. This was done correctly, but it was done prior to the selectmen informing me that they were sending over a bylaw.
Okay.
Prior to me being informed that we had to rule on whether or not we recommended Hightoss Bridge Road
Yeah.
to the town road, prior to knowing about the, um, Right to Farm Act.
So it's an accurate minute?
So, you know, they're accurate, we'll vote on them. Um, and probably what I will end up doing as chair is taking it off and moving it into July since it's an article that we can't even work on until.
Address, yeah.
Address it next year.
Okay, good. Sure we didn't lose track of it, so yeah, thanks, Jerry.
No, I'm trying to.
Right, right, yeah.
Every time I turn around, I think I got enough, I think I got control of those balls. Getting kills.
All right, right.
So, we're now on the minutes. Any motions, uh, on the minutes as, as corrected and sent that out to you, or not corrected, but as amended? Anything on there? Nothing?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Okay.
Second.
Second by David Mead Fox. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against?
I'll abstain.
Yeah, because you weren't here. Okay. I don't see anything else on the agenda. All right. Thank you.
Do you want a motion to adjourn?
Seconding.
Before you do, um, I think we can handle this. Planning board members, if you see, because that, that threw me a curve. If you see somebody waving your hand that, that really wants, that wants to get heard, and I'm, I'm not looking that way, I know Alfred will do it. Look.
Jerry? On the computer and the, on the, it's Karen, on the computer, on the screen, there's a yellow little hand and that's what they're bitching about, is there's a yellow hand that's on their screen asking you to call on them. So in the future, what we need to do is I, I, there you go, Olga. See the little hand, Jerry?
They raised the hand. They put up the icon of a hand.
It's a, right.
Okay, I saw a yellow hand on one, I had no clue because I'd never seen it before. Okay, I saw a yellow hand on one, I had no clue, because I'd never seen it before. So i- if in fact I missed the hand, if I miss you waving at me, don't hesitate to speak up and say, hey, Jerry, somebody's trying to reach you, because.
Okay.
In the, in the future, Jerry, I will just tell you that so-and-so, and so-and-so, and so-and-so has their hand up.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
Right.
That'd be helpful, yep.
Because I do have my hands still with all of you.
I bet you do.
All right, I appreciate it, and, and thank you very much, have a good night.
Night.
Good night.
Night.
Good night. Thank you.